Call to order the meeting of the August 7th, 2019 Frederick County Planning Commission. If you would please join me in a moment of silence. The next item on our is the adoption of our agenda. And do note that we do have one item that was removed from our agenda that I have a motion to approve.
Give approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is our committee reports. We have none from Frederick Water. Our first one will be from Transportation, Mr. Oats.
Yes, we met on July 29th. The first item became before us with the citizen. They're inquiring whether or not car moves could put the entrance of their facility from Brewstown Road and instead use the existing entrance, the Ballfields. It asked D. Otten County if that was possible. So I believe they're supposed to get an answer back at our next meeting. The next item on the agenda was discussion about a truck restriction request on Cedar Hill Road. That didn't meet a favorable response, however, D. Otten has made some efforts over the last six months of trying to get some of the GPS items changed because most of the trucks are going down Cedar Hill and going into people's yards. They're supposed to be going to Amazon and the GPS is in the wrong direction. So that was tabled for 90 days to see if some of these corrections will take effect and take care of the situation. And then the final items was an update on our transportation forum that we're planning on having. Klein is going to have it in October. It's probably going to take place in this room. We don't have the date yet. Still waiting on congressmen, delegates, and such to get back to us and just some updates on different projects.
Thank you, sir. The Dex report from DRC, Mr. Unger.
Yes, sir. We met July 25th. The committee is continuing to evaluate the purpose amendment of the definition of public utilities. And we haven't come to any conclusions yet. We have been talking a lot about that. There's a lot of solar energy coming into effect now with different things and we've been talking about that and how to handle that. So that's a continuous thing we're working on right now. The other thing we talked about is a potential amendment for the requirements for conditional use permits, landscaping buffering regulations of specific uses. And we're going to continue to talk about that. We're going to bring that back in the future for information for you.
All right. Thank you. Winchester Planning Liaison, do you have a report tonight?
Yes, hello, thank you. We last had our public meeting on July 16th. We had three rezoning requests. One was to rezone five acres at 2508 Paper Mill Road from intensive industrial to commercial industrial, and that was approved. Another one was for 4.8 acres of land on 230 Hope Drive and Ballard Drive from Highway Commercial District to Highway Commercial District with a planned unit development overlay. That was approved. And then the final one was about an acre on from 410 to 412 Smithfield Avenue from medium density residential to medium density residential district with the planned unit development overlay.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Nice to have you.
Thank you.
And our last report is from the Board of Supervisors, our liaison, Ms. Trout.
Good evening. Board of Supervisors last met on Wednesday, July 10th at 7:00 PM. You'll forgive me as I'm scrolling through. We had a public hearing on outdoor festival permit, a request of Robert Bowserman. This was approved. We had a permit for the concern hotline, the 20th Annual Friday Fish Fry also approved. We moved to conduct a public hearing for conveyance of our interest held in property identified as tax parcel number 49A 04-1-K-19 in the Back Creek District. And then we also approved a conditional use permit for Arthur Nelson for a landscaping contracting business. There was an additional prohibition of onsite grinding added to that. And I believe that is it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Also glad to have you. The next item on our agenda is our citizen comment portion of our evening. This is anyone that'd like to come before us and speak to any matter that's not on our agenda or in the public hearing. So anyone like to come forward? This is your time. Seeing no one, we'll close the citizen comment portion and move right into our public hearing portion. First item on our public hearing is item number 0.02.19 for CB Ventures LLC. Ms. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is a request to rezone 1.04 acres from the B2 Business General District to the B3 Industrial Transition District with proffers. Now, the subject property was rezoned to the B2 District back in 2016 with the approval of rezoning 05 of 16. The property is located on the south side of Route 11 and the northeast side of Amaco Lane. If I can direct you to the screen on your left, this is a location map that shows the existing zoning, which is the orange. The subject property is this property outlined in the blue. And for reference, you have Route 11, 81, and then here is the adjacent Sheets property. Now, I would note that this rezoning only pertains to one parcel, 43A 48E. The property was rezoned as a whole back in 2016 with about five acres total. So what they're seeking with this amendment, there's really two changes other than the zoning change from the B2 to the B3. There's a removal of the proffer for prohibition of metal buildings, and they're also removing the SCADA system proffer. Now, I would note that those two proffers are still attached to the remainder of the property that was rezoned back in 2016. So with that following the public hearing, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward to the board. I'd be glad to answer any questions. And Evan Wyatt is here on behalf of the application.
Any questions for Ms. Perkins? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Wyatt, would the applicant like to come forward, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Evan Wyatt with Greenway Engineering. Just to add to the staff report, as Candace said, we were here in 2016 to rezone the balance of the property to B2. Since that has occurred, you may have noticed that there are some construction activities going on the property. We had a site plan approved and the applicant is putting in improvements which include the onsite infrastructure. Also, there is improvements to Amaco Lane that are being worked on and the establishment of a gravity sewer line where previously we were going to do a pump station, but now that's been moved to a gravity sewer line through working with Frederick Water and their approval of that infrastructure. The only thing that's changed, other than the improvements that are going on, is the fact that the applicant has been approached with an opportunity to sell the one acre parcel for a facility that will do tire and battery service after they consulted with staff. Staff advised that that was not a permissible use in the B2 District and a B3 zoning would be required, which is the purpose of us being here. The infrastructure improvements that are underway are anticipated to be completed within the next 60 to 90 days. And you may see that there was a carryover proffer from the original rezoning where the residential property owners on the other side of Amaco Lane had the ability to request landscaping improvements on their property. The applicants had engaged them with a letter which is required by proffer. There have been three property owners that have responded and requested the landscaping and the way the proffer is written, that would be done with the next favorable planting season, which would be late fall of this year. So that should get us current, but if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Access to this property, I guess it's through the...
It's through Amaco Lane, and this is done through interparcel connectivity, which was done in the original rezoning. There's also a connection to the Sheets property, which is actually there, but there's the Jersey barriers that are up at the moment.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Wyatt? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This time I open the public hearing. Anyone like to come forward to speak? This is your time for this item on our agenda. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Discussion, any interaction, anything? What do we think?
Move for approval of the rezoning?
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Unger.
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manuel, yes.
Ryan, yes.
Oats, yes.
Malden, yes.
Morrison, yes.
Triplet, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Moon, yes.
Chair votes yes. It's approved. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on 9/11 with approval. Thank you. Move on to our next item, next public hearing item that we have is number 0619 for Landfall Lodge. Mr. Klein.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Again, this is conditional use permit 0619 for the Landfall Lodge. The property is located at 350 Chestnut Grove Road in Winchester in the Gainesboro Magisterial District. The properties subject to this application are identified with property identification numbers 30-A-50 and 30-A-50D. The entire property is presently zoned RA, or our Rural Area Zoning District, and the current land use is residential and agricultural. It totals 188 acres, and it also has a is part of our Conservation Easement Authority program. The proposed use is a special event facility for weddings, charity events, and other similar type functions. If I can direct your attention to the screen, the subject properties are outlined in blue and the frontage is on Chestnut Grove Road just north of Route 522 North.
That's information in here.
Providing a closer aerial of the property, the subject properties are outlined in blue and red. Again, the access to the property is from Chestnut Grove Road. And the subject driveway, apologies, again, Chestnut Grove Road at the residence is the main entrance to the property for special events, and access to the special event facility is provided via private driveway which goes around the residence and down the hill to the back of the rear of the property where the barn and other special event facility structures are located. For context, this is an overview of the entire site. You can see that the barn site is more than 1,000 feet from Chestnut Grove Road, 433 feet from the southern property line, and the adjacent residences, more than 1,400 feet from the northern property line, and more than 2,100 feet from the eastern property line. So it is a significant distance from surrounding properties. Special event facilities are permitted use in the RA Rural Area Zoning District with an approved conditional use permit. This applicant is proposing use of their existing barn, which includes permanent restroom facilities for indoor functions. They have several outbuildings, one of which is a bridal suite, and they would also use the main part of the property, including the ponds, for the wedding ceremonies and for other events, including the charity fishing event that they do. Use of the main entrance from Chestnut Grove Road would be the primary entrance for special event traffic, and they've agreed to restrict the use of all the other entrances to a private or agricultural traffic only as to not have an impact on their adjoining properties. And then they've also provided a designated gravel parking area that's suitable for parking vehicles that are associated with the special events. Again, directing your attention to the screen, this is an aerial provided by the applicant. Again, Chestnut Grove Road forms the property frontage. The area marked A on the map is their main entrance that serves their residence and also will serve special event traffic. The yellow dotted line, again, is that access driveway that goes around the property, down the hill to the rear of the property, to where their main barn is marked as H for the special event facilities. And then, again, they have several outbuildings, a cottage used for a bridal suite, storage buildings. Area marked I would serve as a parking area, and again, they have a pond on the property. It is an active farm. They do do agricultural operations, timbering. Again, the property is in a conservation easement. Should the Planning Commission find this use to be appropriate, staff would recommend that the following conditions be attached: that all review agency comments be complied with at all times; that an illustrative sketch plan in accordance with the requirements of the Frederick County zoning ordinance be submitted to and approved by Frederick County prior to the establishment of the use; that building permits would be required for any new buildings or structures that are associated with the special event facility; that special events would start no earlier than 8:00 AM; and that all the events and related activities would conclude by midnight; that special events may accommodate up to and not to exceed 250 persons; that only the main entrance driveway associated with the address, 350 Chestnut Grove Road, be open to special event traffic; and that all other entrances to the properties would be restricted as private residential or agricultural traffic only; that they would be allocated one monument-style sign not to exceed 50 square feet and 10 feet in height; and that any expansion or modification of this use would require the approval of a new conditional use permit. Following a public hearing this evening, staff is seeking a recommendation by the Planning Commission to forward to the Board of Supervisors on this proposed conditional use permit for a special event facility. I'm happy to answer any questions. And Lowell Henderson, the owner and applicant of Landfall Farms and Landfall Lodge is here this evening. If you have any questions for him, thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Klein? I have one.
Yes, sir.
We say that only the main entrance. Where are the other entrances at? Did you show those and I just missed it?
I can show I can point those out on the map for you. There's four entrances to the property. You have, again, your main entrance on Chestnut Grove Road. You have a shared private driveway that exits the property to the south here, and you have an access road here as well. And there's a fourth entrance, but it's off the it's off the map. But again, he would restrict his entrance to his the private residential entrance that he has from Chestnut Grove Road.
How will those be restricted for events? Will they be gated or they be...
I'll let the applicant speak to how he intends to fulfill that requirement.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Thank you. Yeah, if you'd like to come to come forward. State your name and...
Yes, my name is Lowell Henderson. I'm here with my wife, Dr. Audie Nguyen, and we own Landfall Farm. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. We appreciate your consideration of our conditional use application. As you're aware, our entire 189 acres is in a conservation easement with Potomac Conservancy. Therefore, it can never be developed. And while this hasn't been a financial burden on my wife and I, one of our concerns and one of our goals is to ensure not only that our four children, but our grandchildren and future generations will have the opportunity to receive income to offset the cost of maintaining the property. Compared to the traffic volume and noise pollution at Fort Channadoa, which is exactly one mile from us north, the events we've had host and planned to host have minimal impact on our neighbors. Reasons for this are they're going to be small, on average 20 to 125 versus 500 to 3,000. Selective clientele, each applicant goes through a rigorous screening process, and if they don't meet our guidelines, we will not rent to them. And thirdly, the layout of the property, which a graph does show, but you can't get a true sense of, once you get down at the lodge and in kind of the valley, as you do a 360, you cannot see anybody, any neighbor's house from the lodge. And it's heavily forested with shale ridges. It makes for a wonderful setting for charity events and for weddings and so forth. Prior to our event, first event, April of 2013, which was a first annual Hunter Crane Memorial, I sent letters to all my affected adjoining neighbors informing then on what we were planning to do, why we were doing it, and asked them to please come forward, you know, and tell me any concerns, any issues. None did. It was a wonderful event with several of the neighbors helping as volunteers. For the next three years, we hosted numerous charity events, and the support letters had gone over NW Works, Kids from Evans Home, Virginia Department of Game and Land Fisheries, Bayley's College, and of course, the Hunter Crane Foundation and VDGIF functions. Then in 2016, we were approached by friends about, can we rent your barn? It's a beautiful setting. And as costs were going up, felt this was a great opportunity. So in the fall of 2016, came in, met with zoning, and laid out my business plan for hosting a limited number of small paid events to offset the cost. At that time, of course, there were no additional permits required. Then in May of 2018, the zoning was amended requiring any facility in RA District to have a conditional use permit for any type of event facility. I was not aware of this change until I received contact from Mr. Sharon after a neighbor had complained. Although I have personally, we have personally bore 100% of the cost to upkeep the joint-access road over the last five, six years. I get out there and plow it, keep the gravel on it, keep the ditches taken care of. I understand the Marion's concerns, and so we pulled that out of the application. We want to be good neighbors. We try and be good neighbors. And if that's a problem, I recognize it, so we just won't use it. When we placed the farm in a conservation easement, the cost to us personally was between $16,000 and $18,000. But we gave up the right to develop, which can offset maintenance costs and repairs. And producing hay, cutting firewood, timber, and boarding horses might bring in enough revenue to pay our taxes and insurance, but it's not enough to pay for the upkeep of all the buildings and the roads. Hosting a small number of paid events each year will help to make up the difference. And since all the necessary buildings and the infrastructure were already there, required no new construction, just a little bit of remodeling, adding some more gravel, leveling, making sure water control. So it was a perfect match. So looking at the cost benefit to our neighbors and to the community of close to 200 acres being in the conservation easement, the obvious one with the charity events and allowing others to come and enjoy, but besides that, it increases the value of the property, of my neighbor's property, because it will never be developed, and it doesn't cost them a penny. As opposed to property that will be developed, there's a reduction of the traffic should we had developed it or would have 50, 60 more homes on it. Plus, they get the benefit of, in essence, living next to a national, a natural wildlife preserve. As our farm, it has ideal habitat, significant variety of animals and birds, including feeding grounds for a pair of bald eagles. And again, they can see them soaring over at no cost to them. As a side note, as part of our outreach, on Friday, we had the state game biologist with my neighbor, John Gavitt, and we're hosting a group of neighbors looking to build a coalition to get Bob White reestablished in Frederick County. That is a benefit. And if you all ever had the chance to attend one of our Hunter Crane Foundation events, it's hard to put a value on the benefit to a single mother who lives in the county and has the opportunity to bring her two children and introduce them to fishing at zero cost to her. Likewise, the benefit to the folks from NW Works or the Evans Home. Having presented all this, my wife and I hope that you will approve our request for conditional use permit. Thank you.
Any questions for any questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Mr. Unger.
Well, I'd like to compliment you on keeping your neighbors abreast on what you're doing out there. It's one of the most helpful things you can do when it comes to something like this, and I think it's really wise. And also for supporting some of the charity things that you do is very kind.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from the vote. I'm chairman of the Board of NW Works.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment.
Just let me have the one question before we do, Ms. Triplet. The the main entrance with the quote about the main entrance and the, what do you do during events for the other entrances?
Okay. What we do, and we have put real nice signs out and direct them. Generally, at all events we have, especially charity events, we have people volunteer to direct traffic. It's going to be really easy to control the people flow, which we have always done. I removed the exit to 522 via Chestnut Grove Road sign. I took that down. And then we will simply block that entrance with cones and with tape. And it's easy to do. We did that at our last event.
Okay. Sounds like you have a plan, so.
I have.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Thank you for presenting. This is a public hearing. This time I open the public hearing portion. Anyone that would like to come forward to speak on this matter, this is your time. Please come forward, state your name and your matchell district. Of course, it's probably there. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chairman and members. I'm Jamie Marion. In just a few minutes, my mother plans to come up and speak. I am the executor of the state and the power attorney to 236 Chestnut Grove Road. Again, my mom, homeowner, is going to come and speak on her behalf, as well as my father, who could not be here tonight due to health reasons. I sat back here and listened to everything that was proposed, and I can't help but feel a little heated right now, so I apologize for that. My parents have owned this property on 236 Chestnut Grove Road since 2006, so they have been there for 13 years. It wasn't until the last couple of years that this new form of revenue for them has become an issue for our family. I say that very confidently because we never had the amount of traffic on our road that we currently have. To my understanding, that this is a conservation property, which, again, has become revenue-producing. Again, to my understanding, the property was fixed up for their daughter's wedding, which then became a beautiful venue in which people wanted to, of course, rent. I understand that, I do. However, it is an inconvenience to both my parents and then the other residents that have access to this particular road. It is a single road, one way in, one way out. Nobody can pass. This becomes a hazard when emergency personnel vehicles need to access that road. Again, my father is very sick. He has stage IV COPD and emphysema. He is dying. There is no way that an ambulance could get on this road when there has been bumper-to-bumper traffic when events are being released. I also want to challenge what was said in the fact that he informs the residents of such events. That is not 100% accurate, sir. A lot of times, there are events going on late in the evenings, in the wee hours of the mornings, in which we have not been given notification about. Certainly, I'd like to think that if roles were reversed, any of you would understand, and of course, that they would understand our concerns as well. It was a choice to make this a business. It's also a choice to use this back road in which I think they're trying to brush under the rug here. They use it more than what has been indicated this evening, and I hope that that is taken into consideration. There is a primary access to this property. They should be able to use it. There was a gate up on the back access road in which it has now been taken down, and more trees have been cleared. Again, because it is a venue that is becoming bigger and bigger and more popular in which, again, that there's more traffic on our road. I appreciate your time and consideration and listening to our concerns, Mr. Chairman and members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since you both got the same time, I'll take the young lady here first. You, you, ma'am? No, her.
Oh, oh.
Right there.
Sorry.
Move that down. There you go. State your name.
Yeah, I'm a little shorty. Good evening, Board of Directors. I am Betty Marion. I am the owner of 236 Chestnut Grove Road. Like my daughter stated, over, we built that home in 2006 there, which we thought it was just very rural out there and nice, and within the last couple of years, it's just gotten so, it's traffic, traffic, traffic. I like to be a good neighbor. I'm fine with, you know, Dr. Nguyen and Lowell, but it just seems like that, you know, you got to think of the other people, too. If this is, is there a recorded rights of access, you know, to use this road? If this is, is there a recorded rights of access, you know, to use this road? Which I'd like to know. And the direct traffic entrance and exit through their own parcel, which is right down the road around from where I am, and actually coming out of my driveway, it's really a hazard because there's a curve there and oncoming traffic, like I've pulled out sometimes. And, you know, it's hard to see the others coming. How can county approve this on a 10-foot so-called easement when owners have their own access? Many cars on event days coming and going have to wait to come down the drive. I am, I own the, the road and pay taxes on the road. What happens if someone gets hurt on that road? I mean, that's my road. I pay taxes on it. Would it be fall on me for insurance? One night, I had someone from down there come up and knock on my door after 10 o'clock at night and wanted to know if I was the main house for down below. And I said, no, I'm not. And, you know, these days, how things are. And he said, well, we just wanted to know if we could borrow a jump of cables. Yeah, my car won't start down here. And I said, well, main house is up on the hill. How come county requires 50-foot right-of-way for residential subdivision and rural areas does not apply? And which I know that it is conservation land. How can a commercial business and make money run off the property? My husband is disabled. He is on oxygen 24/7. I never know when I have to call the rescue squad to come and take him to the hospital. And that's a problem, too, you know, when those big rescue squads come up through there. One night, I was coming home and traffic coming out on my road. I mean, they were just coming up the hill, and I had to sit there, and they had to back back so I could get in my driveway with my turn signal on. So, I mean, I have no problem, you know. It's a beautiful piece of land down there. As far as sometimes Lowell doesn't call me back when I call, I'm leaving messages. But, I mean, if they could, they're going to use their, their own, they have a nice, nice paved driveway to go back there. And mine's just an old gravel road. I mean, I've got pictures of the driveway. You know, if you want to see it, it's not very big. So, I mean, if you're going to have a nice event like that, it seems like to me, a paved driveway would be nice to go down. But my concern is that there's going to be more and more and more traffic. And there's nothing put, on the event days, nothing has been roped off and directed traffic to down the road where they are. So, I mean, if I could see, you know, something like that in the makings. And yes, Lowell has put gravel on the road, so I do thank you for that. But it's just, I'm just afraid it's just going to be, you know, it's a nice piece of land, and I really like it there. But I think it's got a property value, you know. It does sound good that conservation land is down below, but does people really want that much traffic coming through there? And who's going to say, you know, that there's going to be a sign down the end of our road, do not use this road? I told my husband the other day, I was going to put up a sign, private property, do not trespass. And he said, no, 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 you don't do anything till you go to this meeting. So, that's all I have to say. Any questions for me?
We can't do that, ma'am, but thank you for, thank you for your input. Appreciate that.
Did you want to see these pictures of the driveway, or?
If you want, we can leave them, but we'll get to those. If you want, just bring them up here, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
State your name, please.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is John Gavitt. I live at 492 Chestnut Grove Road. My wife and I have 27 acres there. It is also covered by a conservation easement and therefore prohibited development in the I'm writing this letter to support, to express my support and my wife's support for approval of this application, so that Lowell and Audie may continue operating their very important work in support of the citizens of Frederick County and not just themselves. Weddings at the Landfall Lodge have provided an opportunity for the bridal party and their guests to celebrate in a beautiful rural venue that is a true showpiece in Frederick County. Parking space has never been an issue due to the large acreage of the property. In addition, approximately 150 acres of the property is protected by a conservation easement that will protect the area, that particular area next to mine, for perpetuity. This easement was donated voluntarily by Audie and Lowell, another example of their dedicated effort to preserve the conservation values of the Hoag Creek watershed that is in close proximity of the city limits of Winchester and would otherwise be subject to future development. Lowell and Audie have spent countless volunteer hours and days with numerous organizations that benefit the youth of Frederick County. These activities range from free fishing days, hosting free events for NW Works, the Hunter Crane Foundation, Bailey's Closet, and special events sponsored by the Virginia Department of Game and Land Fisheries. All of these events have been provided at no cost to the organization of the county. Events involving shooting of firearms and or fireworks have always been done with consideration to neighbors and are practiced in a safe and professional manner. In addition, Lowell and Audie have also organized and contributed personally to events that have provided thousands of dollars towards scholarship money for graduating high school seniors of Frederick County for more than a decade. We have had the opportunity to attend several events at Landfall and have witnessed firsthand the generosity of these two wonderful neighbors. We have also asked for assistance from them on occasion with regard to driveway and invasive plant species problems, as we all have, and they have always been willing to help. As Lowell mentioned, we have a meeting on Saturday to, as a start, to hopefully get a program going to restore Bob White quail in Frederick County, the way that, not the way that they used to be, that will never happen. But I think hopefully we'll have some wild coves eventually back in Frederick County. For these reasons stated above, we ask you to approve Lowell and Audie's CUP application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I'm for it. Anyone else? This man.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tina Crane. Chairman and board members, thank you so much for allowing me to speak this evening on behalf of Lowell Henderson and Dr. Audie Nguyen. I wrote a letter that I'd like to read. I'm writing this letter to show my support for the approval of the CUP 0619 by Lowell Henderson and Dr. Audie Nguyen, so they continue to operate as, as they have. As a friend, I can attest to the love and support both Audie and Lowell show to our community and especially our youth. I've never met anyone quite as selfless and devoted to reaching out and helping others as much as I've witnessed the commitment from these two. Some people may donate monetarily to different causes and organizations, and I'm certain that they do, but more than that, they put in the hours of hard work to make opportunities to benefit our youth and our families right here in Frederick County, Virginia. As one small example, my own children, among hundreds more, county high school student athletes have been recipients of free sports physicals that they've made available. I'm also extremely proud and blessed for the work both Lowell and Audie have put into the Hunter Crane Foundation. They have hosted many of our events there at no cost. But it's not just our foundation that they graciously share their resources and talents to. They are also involved in so many organizations, such as, and as we've heard many times here at the NW Works, Virginia Department of Game and Land Fisheries, Bailey's Closet, just to name a few. The opportunities they provide to help these organizations are priceless on our community as it's only a better place because of what Lowell and Audie are doing and their desire to bless others. There's so much more. I actually could stand here and say, as a personal beneficiary of what, what they, what they do and their huge hearts. Their strong character, they're just honest to goodness, really good people. They're the kind of people we would want in our community and blessed to have. They're so much good that they do, and it would be my hope and the hope of many others that this conditional use permit would be approved, so they may continue to do what they've been doing, which is a huge blessing to our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone? Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing. Discussion. Mr. Oats.
Here, the one concern about the, from the neighbor, I think a simple solution would be under item number six, where it says all other entrances, other than the main entrance, should be restricted for private residential agricultural traffic only. Maybe restricted, we could replace that with a gate, if the owner's amenable to that. And whenever there's a special event, place a lock on the gate, that way no one can come out that road. The applicant's amenable to that, I'd say let's make that a change number six.
I'd agree with that.
Comments? Just, Mr. Moon?
The only thing I was going to touch on that as well, just that, you know, I think condition number six would help resolve, if it's tightened up a little bit, could help resolve the issue with the adjoining owner. I certainly understand where they're coming from, and I think this is a good, good starting point, and certainly if they're amenable to, to that change that Commissioner Oats just mentioned, I think that helps address, that issue will go a long way.
Mr. Morrison, did you have a?
Oh, I was going to make a comment a little bit ago.
Mr. Unger. I had two or three at the same time.
I guess I'm not clear with it. We're going to use the entrance that's planned to use to go back to the event. Is that going to be the same entrance that's affecting the, the landowner that's having a problem with the traffic?
Which road?
I think the lower entrance is the issue. It's the lower entrance, or M, on the map is the one that impacts the adjoining owners. Am I right, Mr. Klein?
Mr. Klein, could you maybe come forward and add some clarity to that?
Yeah, if I can add some clarification. I raised the complaint with Mr. Henderson when I was reviewing the application, and one of the requirements for a special event center is if you have a shared entrance, you have to give permission of the adjoining property owners. Understanding the issue that he was having with the adjoining, he agreed to restrict his entrance to entrance A on this diagram here. Again, that's, that's their main entrance from Chestnut Grove Road. And again, it's their paved driveway that goes down, around the house, down the hill to the rear of the property, to what is their, their barn, their events center, kind of the main hub of, of their special event activity. He also agreed to restrict the use of the other entrances as, as, as has been described with the signage and traffic management plan that he has in place for his events, to make sure that traffic doesn't inadvertently exit the property in a direction that would be adverse, adversely affect the neighbors. I understand Mr. Oats's request to have a gate. Certainly, we need to defer to the applicant if they'd be willing to install such a mechanism. But again, visiting the property, seeing the signage they have, we felt that just restricting it and letting them decide what is the best, best method depending on the event type was, was a suitable solution. But again, it's open to the applicant if they, if they would agree to a gated entrance.
Mr. Klein, just to, just to clarify, for Commissioner Unger's benefit, and I think everybody else, that if you could point to where the M is on there, that that's the, the access that's a concern of the adjoining owner?
That's where the X is drawn, Mr. Unger.
So that'll go away now. If we don't use that for an access, there won't be a problem.
It'll, it'll still be a driveway. If he wants to use it for agricultural operations or his private use, he can, can you do that? But for events, yes, sir, that'd be correct. And he described the situation where he installs cones with tape that marks it as, is not an exit, and then again, he has traffic management volunteers on the site directing traffic back up the hill and out the main entrance.
Mr. Triplet has a.
That was the, I wanted that answered, though.
Okay. Would the applicant, I'd come forward and be willing to answer the question that we're proposing before you, is that, willing to put a gate at that to restrict?
Oh, yes, sir. I got a 16-footer sitting in the bottom of the barn, and I could have it up Friday.
Okay. Sounds good.
And that'll solve it. There used to be a gate, but there was an issue with water control, so when I was ditching, I had to take it out. But I got a 16-footer sitting there, ready to go back in.
Okay, thanks, sir.
And that'll be locked.
Okay. All right. So with that, any other discussion?
Hearing none.
Mr. Triplet, you also understand what you're asking to add to number six?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I do, thank you. And they understand. That's the main thing. So, having said all this, then I make the motion to approve 06-19 conditional use permit.
With, with the inclusion, modification number six.
Modification number six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Morrison. Mr. Moon?
Moon, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Triplet, yes.
Morrison, yes.
Holden, yes.
Oats, yes.
Klein, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, yes.
Chair of Oats, yes. It's, it's approved, it goes to the board supervisors with approval for the 9/11 board supervisor meeting. Thank you. Thank you for everyone's input. Next item on our agenda, we have no other items on our agenda other than other.
The best kind of item.
This time, I usually make an announcement. Do we have a meeting coming up for our second?
We have no items for the next planning commission meeting, so we'll go ahead and cancel that and see you in September.
Do I have a motion to do so?
Absolutely.
Cancel and adjourn.
I've got both of them. We'll wrap up all those in favor. Thank you.